Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I call the City Council Meeting Committee of the Whole to order for Wednesday, October 18. A lot of things to think about, so at this time we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join Alderman Condon in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll for tonight. Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Dickman? Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
The President, Your Honor? Thank you, sir. So, good evening and welcome again as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that you're sharing your opinions with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place, especially for the folks in here. If you'd please put your cell phone on silent or turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council on any specific item or anything at the end, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, ward, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not as any one individual. As we talked about before, we want to hear from everyone, so please don't disturb or clap or yell or anything so that we can hear whatever it is someone's talking with us about. This is your warning for that, so if someone does disrupt, I'll have to ask you to leave, and we don't want to do that. So, thank you, and you'll limit your remarks to five minutes. City Administrator, any update tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a whole bunch of public hearings, ten. One under community development, eight under public works, and one under finance. So, the first one, community development, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing for case REZ 23-05, being the request of Anthony Properties to rezone 10.17 acres of Lot 1 of Phoenix Center Sixth Edition in the 5600 block of Tremont Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial to RMF Multi-Family Residential District. Please note that Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended denial, so eight votes are required for passage. Is there anyone here to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Tom Pasternak, Davenport attorney and attorney for Anthony Properties, the petitioner in this matter. So, since you've got ten, we'll try to be as brief as we can, okay? In this instance, we have a situation with the Reserve Apartments who are up there on Brady and right near 59th Street. They are looking to expand, so currently they have seven buildings, which about 28 units per building. They have got an offer on the property immediately to the east, the Humane Society, about 10 acres, to which they would like to go ahead because they have such a substantial waiting list, they would like to add some additional buildings. Talk is that of the four buildings, again with 28 units, may be based on soil, it may be 38 units if it has to be a split level. So, but unfortunately, in order to do the expansion, we're going to have to rezone. The property is currently I-1. We're looking to become, you know, residential, multifamily, and that's the purpose that we're here, and we'll have further discussions on this matter as we get to the consideration, the first consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next area of eight public hearings is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 46th Street North Lincoln Avenue to North Pine Street reconstruction project. Seeing none? Seeing none, I'm... seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 46th Street Bridge over Cardinal Creek replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Goose Creek Trail Connection Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fourth public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Duck Creek Sewer Interceptor Extension Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing?
Hello, my name is Gary Eckland, and I live in Davenport, Iowa, and I'm not really sure the details of this, but I do want to complain in particular about the way that the sewer bills seem to be targeted to shift the burden from property taxpayers to lower-income people who use water, and my-
That's great. This is about the extension, though, so let's stick to the topic.
Doesn't that include the payments? Because the payment is going to come on our sewer bill, so-
No, this is to extend the sewer out to hook up more individuals.
Right, and who's gonna pay for that? Isn't that the people who are paying their sewer bills? Where's the money coming from?
Some of it's coming from... Oh, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, um-
Stick to the topic, please.
Right, well, if you're not going to let me speak on sewer bills, I don't know that I have anything else to say. It's my understanding that the costs for extending sewers into new additions like Amazon fall on the people who pay sewer bills, and-
This?
If you're not going to let me speak, I'll sit down. I thought that something to do with sewers would include sewer bills, but go ahead.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Open the fifth public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Modern Wood and Park Suppression System replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the sixth public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for traffic signalization of Third and Fourth Street Two Way Conversion Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? See?
Sorry, I'm not sure if I heard you right. Was this about the two-way, turning the one ways into two ways?
This is about purchasing the traffic signals for that project. That's correct.
I would like to speak in opposition to that because it's an extraordinary waste of money. Two-way streets might have made sense back when we had two-way streets, but now we have one-way streets, and spending millions and millions of dollars to do something that we did 50 years ago and don't do anymore is an extraordinary waste of money when you have people who are paying sewer bills and property taxes far above their properly-assessed values, and it's an extraordinary waste of money to be spending all of this money to redo something that's already been done one way. Now, you could say maybe 50, 60, 75 years ago, they shouldn't have went to one ways, but to spend millions and millions of tax dollars, and you know, my personal perspective is the city across the board takes a screw-you attitude towards minimum wage workers, and this money could be better spent assisting minimum wage workers to buy a house or to fix up a house or with their rental. You're always giving money to landlords, and I'm not saying give money to tenants. At this point, I'm not a tenant, and if you gave every tenant, every low-income tenant $10,000 cash, that would be great, but it would leave me out. But this just seems like an extraordinary waste of money, and I'll sit down, but this is a big waste of money.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And I open the seventh public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the flood mitigation River Drive from Cary Avenue to East Third Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and I open up the eighth public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the flood mitigation West River Drive and Marquette Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and that concludes public hearings for this evening. Your Honor, back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The next area, finance, has one public hearing. Alderman Condon will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance public hearing. Public hearing on amending the North Urban Renewal Plan to include the internal TIF. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Next area is petitions communications. I just have one for tonight. I'm just letting you know, next week, we'll again recognize the Finance Department for another award nationally recognized for another budget presentation award that they're getting from the Finance Officers Association. So, we'll do it next week, but I just wanted to say it tonight because they do such great work. I just want to keep talking about it. So, I see. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the four areas of discussion. The first one's community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four items up for consideration this evening. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-03, being the request of 53rd Luxury LLC on behalf of Ed Spear Construction, Inc., and Sheila M. Spear Living Trust to rezone approximately 16 acres of land generally located southeast of 53rd Street and Spring Street from C2 Corridor Commercial and RMF Multi-Family Residential District to C3 General Commercial District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is also a third consideration ordinance for case ROW 23-04, being the request of 53rd Luxury LLC to vacate approximately 25,900 square feet of improved Spring Street right-of-way located south of East 53rd Street. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item? Any comments from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-04, being the request of Jason Cusino to rezone approximately 1.19 acres of land generally located southeast of the Grand Avenue and East 46th Street intersection at 801 East 46th Street from RMF Multi-Family Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Go to council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. And our final item is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-05, being the request of Anthony Properties to rezone the 10.17 acres of Lot 1 of Phoenix Center Sixth Edition in the 5600 block of Tremont Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial to RMF Multi-Family Residential District. Please note that Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended denial, which means that this will require eight votes for passage. Anyone from the public? Please step to the lectern and state your name and address or ward. You have five minutes.
Tom Pasternak, attorney at Davenport, again attorney for the petitioner, Anthony Properties. So, the bottom line here from our perspective is, as I said in the public hearing, we need to downzone the property to RMF status from an I-1, and to do that, again, obviously, we have to go through the procedure of rezoning, okay? The real critical question that I have here is that, you know, is an RMF use or designation really inappropriate for this particular property? So, obviously, the city has written a staff report and says, "We think it is," and they base it on the fact that right now, the comp plan says that the property is I-1, not residential, okay? So, because it's not part of the comp plan or not consistent with the comp plan, it's obviously going to have to be such that we will not allow that rezoning. They also say that there's some compatibility issues with regard to if we go ahead and put the apartments in, it's not compatible with the industrial use to the north, to the south, and to the east. And then the final argument is pretty much, we want to preserve industrial property. So, again, I asked the question, well, you know, let's take a look at that. The mere fact that the comp plan says that it's I-1, it's not something that is always verbatim. It's not an insurmountable burden to go ahead and try to change the comp plan. Market conditions and property do that all the time. We come before the council and always ask for reconsideration of the comp plan, which was set in about 2019. At that point, that's when the reserve came into effect. It was in its infancy. Now, at this particular point of time, we take a look at the market conditions and we take a look at the property in and of itself, okay? Right now, this property, the Humane Society, this 10 acres, it's kind of like infill, pretty much. It's not really connected to a street, street, per se. It's inside, okay? It's been available for as long as I've been practicing, which is pretty darn old, okay? And as far as I know, there has not been any singular offer with regard to trying to do an industrial development with that property, okay? If we were to look at this right now and do a comp plan, I'd say we'd call this property transitional because the reserve is there, okay? It is multifamily. It is directly to the west. And so, in my mind, as we look at that, I don't think that the comp plan in and of itself provides the basis solely to go ahead and not commit this rezoning. I think that, again, RMF would be appropriate use as we look at the property today, and knowing that I now have a user that wants to use it, and in fact, let's go to the next argument, compatibility, which I have a hard time understanding in and of itself, because how can it truly be incompatible when the apartments, to which it's going to be the same, are right next door, okay? I'm under the same conditions. I'm under the same perimeter of industrial to the north, the storage units to the south or to the east, okay, and basically mostly vacant property to the south. So, when we talk about incompatibility, I'm not catching the drift, per se. I know that we can work through separate issues as well. It doesn't align with the industrial uses or whatever, but the bottom line is the apartments to the west are going to be exactly, it's the same darn development. So, it's hard for me to understand the compatibility, and I believe, and again, I may be mispronouncing the Cusino petition that was just read forehand, which is kind of a reverse situation, and yet, it's compatible. We're going to put storage units in multifamily area, and that's compatible, okay? So, again, I just ask, as you're assessing the situation with Cusino, take a look at that, because I really find the compatibility issue to be pretty subjective. And finally, the preservation of I-1 property, yeah, I think that's important. I think I-1 is definitely in need for the city, but in my mind, there is substantial industrial property. As far as I know, when we took account, it was about 750, almost 900 acres of potential industrial property that's available. Now, it may not be shovel-ready, and again, we also had that Sloperton property come into effect that we annexed roughly oh, about six months ago, four months ago, which is going to add some industrial use. So, my contention is that there is plenty of industrial property, and if it's not shovel-ready and the city really thinks there is a need for preservation of industrial property, then let's go out and take a look at that property that is not shovel-ready yet, and let's start making it so. So, with that in mind, when you look at the big perspective in the city's arguments, my impression is that this parcel is definitely amenable to a rezoning, that the comp plan should be changed, and there really is no reason not to make it RMF based on the existing reserve that's to the west. Thank you very much for your attention. I do have sellers' representatives here in the event any of the council wants to talk to sellers' representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, we will go to council comments. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to talk to the seller, if a representative would come up.
I'm Sean Stunkel from Hawkeye. Can we refer to listing?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would you explain your client's position on this and how long it's been available, this land?
Yep, yep. So, we listed it for the client, the Humane Society, in November of 2020, and from that point on, it had been vacant and essentially unusable for their need if they were to build on it. And from my understanding, it's been vacant and not usable, and no one has decided to build on it and/or put an offer on it for years and years and years, in which I am not privy to that exact date, but it has been some time. So, their desire is to, you know, get it sold. They don't have any use for it. What they are trying to, and what would need to be done for the land, for them to build, you know, a larger facility or move their, you know, current location to there, there would be a lot of funding, a lot of capital development that would need to be, a lot of capital that would need to be raised to do so, to erect a building that would fit their needs. So, their desire is to 100% get it sold. We have it priced at a price point which is very, you know, good for, a good price for vacant land, and it's, you know, not something that we have had a lot of activity on. We had one potential buyer, and, you know, we wrote, they wrote an offer on it, but then they backed out very quickly thereafter. So, for the three years we've had it, it is still sitting on the market.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want to say? Oh, yes, thank you.
No other council comments, so I do want to kind of put this out there for the council to consider, kind of understand what the issue is here. So, obviously, this is coming with a staff recommendation for denial. It was denied by PMZ, so there's some weight that is carried with that. But I think Alderwoman and Lee and I have had some discussions about this, and there's a need for RMF. We've got a proven developer with a proven product, okay? So, they already exist, and they have a very good product that's wanted. So, generally, it's good, but we also hear the concerns of the staff and need to heed their concerns and really consider them as we look into it. So, and obviously, we need eight people to vote for this if it's going to pass, so I think everybody needs to kind of spend the next week looking at the facts and consider this. I think Alderwoman Lee and I would like to reach back out to the developer and continue to have some conversations. The two big concerns that have been brought up by our staff, I would say is, one, and, you know, Mr. Pasternak brought these up, but I'll kind of re-hammer them and condense them to two. One is how the residential, the RMF, would interact with industrial and consider noise and traffic as a couple of big ones. And remember that when you're discussing zoning, yes, we have a specific project in front of us, but that doesn't mean that that's what that land is going to be forever. You are rezoning the land, not specific to the project. So, one of the things we'd like to talk about is, are there options to exit traffic anywhere else besides Tremont? That's one of the big concerns, is that the residential would exit onto Tremont, which exits into an industrial, an I-1 zone, okay? And then also the preservation of I-1. So, obviously, I-1 is one of our most intensive uses, and we don't have as much of it as we have others, so anytime that you downzone it to something else, you're giving that up as an opportunity to be zoned at its highest use. But there's a lot to consider there because we also need RMF. So, I think those are the two big concerns, and we've got to, I think the council's got to decide, are we comfortable with the interactions between industrial and residential in this particular case, and are we comfortable giving up this parcel of I-1 to make it RMF? And so, I would just encourage everyone on the council to spend the next week schooling yourself up on the topic, and we'll certainly have more discussion, and I'm going to turn it back over to Alderwoman Lee here.
And it's not really a question, I'm sorry. I would like to say that the background information is quite detailed if you click on the agenda. So, there's a lot of good information there, and I'd like to ask staff if they would send out the maps that they sent to me this afternoon on the shovel-ready I-1 that's available in the city. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments, this is going to remain on discussion. Alderwoman Lee, will you please set our agenda?
Yes, thank you very much. I move that items one, two, three, and four go to discussion.
All of them. All of them.
Oh, what? I'm sorry. I move? Oh, you wanted to... made a mistake. Okay, the first three on consent and number four on discussion. Thank you. I move.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The agenda has been set, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7, no parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Jefferson Avenue along the west side from East 38th Street north to the dead end thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 11, resident parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Scott Street along the west side from Rush Home Street to Lombard Street and along the east side from Rush Home Street, south 355 feet thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7, no parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by removing Perry Street along the east side from 12th Street to Kirkwood Boulevard between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, except holidays therfrom. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number four, resolution approving street lane or public ground closures on the list of dates and times to hold outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Elaine Folker, Norwood Park Fall Festival, 2200 block of Ripley Street, 12:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., Saturday, October 28, 2023 closures. Ripley Street from West Dover Court to Lombard Street, West Rush Home Street from Ripley Street, east and west to the alley. And the next, Ballet Quad Cities Nutcracker School Program, 2023, River Center slash Adler Theater, 136 East Third Street, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Friday, December 8, 2023, closure northernmost parking lane and two travel lanes on East Third Street from Brady Street to Iowa Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Next, item number five, motion approving noise variance requests on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read both of these before asking for comment. First, Elaine Folker, Norwood Park Fall Festival, 2300 block of Ripley Street, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, October 28, 2023, outdoor music over 50 dB. And next, Nico Becerra, Birthday Party, 1807 Pineacre Avenue, 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Saturday, November 4, 2023, outdoor music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number six, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. First, we have Aldi Incorporated, number 81, 3643, West Kimberly Road, new license, license type, class B, beer/wine carryout. Then we have the German American Heritage Center and Museum, 119 East Third Street, temporary outdoor event, October 21, license type, special class C beer/wine on premises. Please note this to be voted on later on in the agenda. We then have those items under Section B, the annual license renewals, which I will not read, but they're there for your review. Excuse me. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to place all items on the consent agenda except for the German American Heritage Center museum item as noted.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed, same sign? Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 46th Street North Lincoln Avenue and North Pine Street reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item... Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. Brian, would you put up the... first of all, I want to say this is a really needed project, and I'm really excited about it. As I walked down this street, that was the biggest concern of anybody. I knocked on their door. So, this is a great project. My question is, we're voting on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. So, when I go to the background information, there isn't any information about plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. And this is the same for all the projects under public work. But yet, I'm expected to vote on those things, but I don't have the information. So, I do have some questions on some other things that are going to come up because that information is not on the background for some of the others as well. So, I guess my question is, on the agenda for the public and for us, can we have the information that we're voting on, like the maps, and just a quick summary of how much these are costing and if there's something about the contract or- And if there's something about the contract or specs that we need to know? That would be very helpful. I ask that of staff. Thank you.
Sure, we can look into that. All that information is available for people to inquire, but we'll see what, how much staff time will be involved in trying to upload that information.
It, it should be there, and I shouldn't have to chase every person.
Right, we're going to take a look at how much time it will take from staff to upload it.
Okay, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 46th Street Bridge over Cardinal Creek replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Goose Creek Trail Connection project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee.
Just a quick question. This shows that it's Ward 8, but I'm assuming that this project is the whole thing for seven and eight. Am I correct on that?
Clay Merritt Engineering and Capital. So this is a small connection piece that's starting from the Goose Creek Trail Phase 2 project that was completed this year that goes all the way up to East 59th. And then this one will, it's all about 100 feet, 150 feet or so, that will then connect to next year's construction project, which is the extension of the Veterans Memorial Parkway Trail Project. So it's all, this is a fairly small 100,000 or so dollar project that happens entirely in Eighth Ward.
Okay, so this one is not related to the dis...
Correct. No, it's, it's within the same corridor of the Goose Creek, but this one in particular is what's connecting. So our grant project for the Phase 2 project, which was completed this year, and our trail extension for Veterans Memorial, we have about 100, 150 feet of, of property that doesn't connect the two. This one does.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Duck Creek Sewer Interceptor Extension Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Okay, on this one, I know that this is under ARPA, and I do want to explain to Mr. Eklund that this is a, a different type of project where it's being funded under the American Rescue Act plan and not necessarily from our sewer, okay? So this is different. Normally, you're right, okay? And also, I have a question, going back to my question about information. What is the current estimate of cost for this now? It's been a while since we've talked about that.
So we can get that information to you. I, I will offer that previously, the council has asked us not to put the, the costs in, because that directs the bidders to exactly what our budget is, and then we don't get fair and impartial bidding.
Okay. Okay, so that, that's helpful. Yeah, okay. Thank you. And, okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the modern Ruben Park Fire Suppression System Replacement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Hi, my name's Dale Gilmore, Sixth Ward. I'm not prepared to speak on this tonight, but I would like this to be put on the discussion agenda so that I can speak on it next week. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council? Alderwoman Lee.
And on this one, I, I do want to say, I still have safety concerns with this. I know we're moving forward, I know it was a 5-5 vote with a tie break, but my concerns with safety are no different. I'm sorry, oh.
We're on fire suppression.
I've been walking too many streets for door knocking. Okay, go ahead.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the traffic signalization for Third and Fourth Street Two Way Conversion Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee.
No, I'll say it. Okay, I still have concerns with the safety on this. I have not looked at the traffic data that was provided me, but I will, and I would like to see this stay on discussion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the flood mitigation River Drive from Cary Avenue to East 3rd Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee.
Okay, okay. What I'd like to do is go through seven, eight, and nine, and then ask a question.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay? Anyone else have a question on that one? We'll come back to it. Item number eight is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the flood mitigation for West River Drive and Marquette Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Other than Alderwoman Lee, which we'll get back to. Item number nine is a resolution approving a sublet agreement between the Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management and the City of Davenport for the West River Drive and Marquette Street Flood Mitigation Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
I just wanted to say that I'm very excited about all of this. This is, you know, part of our flood mitigation, that we have worked hard to find dollars for, that staff has worked hard to find dollars for. I'm looking forward to these first steps. This is a critical part of the long-range plan where, and several of these are where water is coming up before water is coming over. So very critical, and I'm glad that we're able to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Could I have someone from staff come up and just describe these three projects? Because we haven't talked about them for a long time publicly. How they're going to work together and the funding for these? Because it's different funding for different parts of the project.
So the first project is River Drive, essentially from Third Street to Cary. As you are all aware, we have to shut down River Drive early, because once floodwaters hit around flood stage 17 and 1/2 to 18, the Mississippi River actually comes from underneath the storm sewer system, and so it doesn't actually overtop the seawall. This project actually corrects that historic infrastructure issue. And so in essence, once we, once we complete this, it'll be, that 17 and 1/2 to 18 will expand to River Stage 21 to 21 and 1/2, so we can keep East River Drive open for longer. And that was one of the larger, one of the, I would say, key priorities of the flood resiliency plan. And from a funding perspective, this is funded entirely with the ARPA spending plan that you all approved. The second project is River Drive and Marquette. So it's a very similar situation. So the, the flood actually comes up under, from the storm sewer system, and that happens at a much earlier stage. So river stage about 14 and 1/2 till about 18, and that's where we use city crews to try and continuously manually pump all that water out of the intersection to try and keep it open for travel. This project corrects that, and we're able to keep the floodwaters out until it overtops the seawall. So that saves us about 3 and 1/2 feet of flood. This particular project, we were able to get a federal grant for, so about 1.265 million for this particular project. Your third resolution is approving that grant. So it's actually through FEMA. FEMA doesn't deal directly through us, they deal through Iowa Homeland Security. So we are a subrecipient of that grant, and, which is how it's titled that way.
And I would like, I would like to also say, I think these are the two most critical parts of the flood plan. It's stopping the water coming from underneath. And, and so it's a part of the team on how we manage floods. And so I'm really happy that you've been able to get some good funding and that we're getting these implemented. So thank you very much.
Alderman Griffin.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, you know, two things out of that flood resiliency plan. The first thing I, I told a lot of people is, stopping the over-the-top flooding doesn't do any good if you haven't taken care of the underground flooding, which is what we're doing first in, in Phase 1. And then the second thing is, if we were going to implement a comprehensive flood mitigation strategy, it was going to take a lot of state and federal dollars to make that happen. And so far, we're getting those grants and we're, we're moving things along. So that's really good to see, and I commend our staff for going out and getting those federal dollars and state dollars to help us out. The one thing I would ask towards the end of the year, or maybe at the beginning of, of next year, is kind of an update on Phase 1 and exactly where we're at with it, so we can share that, because there's a lot that goes into Phase 1, and I don't think anybody's tracking any of it or all of it off the top of their head. So it would be good to say, here's what we said we're going to do, here's where we're at two years later, and we'll just keep plugging along on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Griffin. Mayor Madison.
Thank you, Chair, for letting me speak. I just want to commend the staff also. We sat in many meetings with our representative, Ms. Miller-Meek's staff, specifically the Chief of Staff and the Senator's staff, to make this a priority, and then with the Homeland Security folks at the state, to make this a priority, and they listened to us and, and helped us. So a lot of the credit goes to them and the partnerships that we developed with them to get them to take on projects we're interested in. So I just want to say, thanks, staff. We'll keep doing that. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. And before I move on to reading the rest of these items, you'll notice that the dollar amount is actually listed on these. These are the ones we are actually accepting that have been done. And like the city administrator said before, we used to let them know how much we had to spend, and that's usually what it costs. So we don't do that anymore, and I, and I kind of requested that a long time ago, and I think we've gotten favorable bids moving forward. And so that's, that's where we're headed. So item number 10 is a resolution accepting work completed under the CY 2023 pedestrian curb ramp retrofit program by Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated of Moline, Illinois, an amount of $274,071.38. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution accepting work completed under the Waverly Road Shoots and Lane to North Lincoln Avenue Reconstruction and Overlay Project by Langman Construction in the amount of $355,545.10. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a resolution accepting work completed under the CD BG Alley Program, 301 Kirkwood Boulevard to 330 East 15th Street Alley Reconstruction Project by Langman Construction in the amount of $141,821.63. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 13. Oh, sure, come on up.
I'm sorry I wasn't so fast.
Oh, you're fine.
Just real quickly, I wanted to suggest that funding streets and alleys with funds from this particular source that otherwise could be used for housing or some other issue related to our housing problems might be more useful in both the short and the long term. Because we can, we can find ways to pay for alleys and streets from other sources, right? Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Gary Eklund, and I do want to second what he just said. This being community development block grant money that could have been spent on housing. And I want to mention a neighbor of mine, a black woman, grandmother, her and her family members, I believe that they were illegally evicted in a conspiracy between the neighborhood department and a landlord named Chris Grimm.
Mr. Chair. Sir, does that, can you stick to the topic, please? Alley resurfacing?
And, well, no, there's, there's the community development block grant money that I'm addressing, which is the, the, the spending, the money that's being spent on this project. And I'm saying the money that is being spent on this project could be spent on housing. And in particular, there's a grandmother who was evicted from her house when the landlord in the city said the house was for sale, and it wasn't for sale. And then after they evicted her, they put it up for run again, and the city advised the landlord on how to...
Mr. Chair. Sir, please, please, please stick to the alley resurfacing project.
I, I will sit down.
Not the funding source.
I will sit down, I will say that the, the funding...
Thank you.
The funding should be spent on human needs and not on roads.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 13 is a resolution awarding a contract for the 2023-2024 Sewer and Manhole Rehabilitation Program to Langman Construction in the amount of $3,172,529.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Gary Eklund, I'll be very brief. This money is being spent, and the poorest people are made to pay more than to their fair share. And a quick example, I have like a $260 sewer bill right now. Most of that water was actually used to water my gardens, and most of my gardens were destroyed by the city. So not only did the city come and destroy my food and my flowers...
Sir, could you stick, could you stick to the item on the agenda?
The sewer bill is not fair. It's not fair that you put the burden of the sewer bill on the...
You can, you can talk to that at public with comment. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Council? Anyone from council? Sorry. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 14 is a resolution awarding a contract for construction-related services for the 2023-2024 Sewer and Manhole Rehabilitation Program to Stranded Associates in the amount not to exceed $463,500. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 15 is a preliminary resolution for the 2024 Alley Resurfacing Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 16 is a motion approving change order number one to Langman Construction in the amount of $49,782.59 for the West 7th Street, Game Street to Ripley Street Resurfacing Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move that all items except for five and six be stay on discussion, and the rest go to consent.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? The agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is Finance. Alderman Dunn will lead the discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have five items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution amending the North Urban Renewal Plan to include the internal TIF. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport. I don't really understand the meaning of this.
Sir, can I interrupt you real quick and just tell you that you've been here down a lot?
Yes, sir.
And I know a lot of your worries and, and complaints and struggles.
Yes, sir.
And we have time set aside for that at the end, and you can speak each week, but we're also a city of 100,000 people, and we're doing our very best to just move through our agenda here.
Yes, sir.
So seeing as you said that you don't understand what the topic is, I'm going to ask you to have a seat, and then I'm going to ask you to come back up when, at the appropriate time.
I would like to address TIF. TIF, TIF. TIF is a subject, can I address TIF?
I think we need to speak about this item on the agenda, and we're doing our best to work with you, sir.
Well, I will, I will sit down, but you're denying me the right to address TIF.
I appreciate you sitting down, and we'll have time for you later. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address item number one? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Would somebody from staff come up and explain this so that we all understand it? Thank you. Thank you.
First, Burger Community and Economic Development. TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing. So in general, TIF is a funding mechanism used that's similar to URTE tax exemption, both recognized by the state. And it's used to incent projects that will create an increase in the tax base. And the council has typically looked at projects that increase jobs and tax base in that way over the years, mostly in the industrial area. The internal TIF that's on the agenda is to reference the staff time it takes to process those payouts on an annual basis, monitor those TIFs, make reports to the state, all the auditing requirements, as well as marketing when we have new industrial projects that demand that. So it's quite a bit of staff time, and so this is just the annual request to be able to fund that administrative function.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, thank you both. Item number one, I'll move on. Item number two is a resolution setting a public hearing on granting a gas easement on city-owned property located at the southwest corner of West River Drive and Marquette Street to Mid-American Energy. Parcel noted here on our agenda. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Counsel? That'll move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the purchase of a rescue and response vehicle from Lenko Industries, Inc. of Pittsfield, Massachusetts, in the amount of $283,735 using State of Iowa Department of Administrative Services Contract 23202. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number three? Anyone from council? Yes, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. I've done my homework on this, and I am not going to. I've decided that I will not question the Davenport Police Department's stated need for a Bearcat vehicle using asset forfeiture. What I would like... Would somebody please explain how the asset forfeiture will then relate to the CIP later on?
Yes, Jeff Laidle, your police chief. So asset forfeiture right now is being put up front. This is a vehicle that takes a year to make. So we have to... It's in our CIP. It's in our CIP budget that we planned for next year. So this gives us an opportunity to start the bill now by the time we have that opportunity to go through that route.
Okay. Thank you very much. The timing of this may be awkward because it's so close to the election, but I strongly hope... I support this, and I strongly hope that no one uses this for political gain. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lee. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Kelly.
Police chief, could you tell me what a Bearcat is? Sorry.
Jeff Laidle, police chief. So this is a replacement of our previous armored vehicle that we have for emergency operations, emergency rescues. So we had had one that the city actually refurbished for us probably three years ago that we had to take out a commission because of the safety aspects. During this time, we've been borrowing this piece of equipment from Bettendorf to include an officer that they send with that piece of equipment. It's been, in the last two years, over 100 times that we borrowed from Bettendorf.
Alderwoman Lee, for a second time?
And I forgot. I've been requested to ask that this be kept on discussion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So item number three has been requested be on discussion. Item number four is a resolution awarding a contract for the installation of Credit Island Nature Playground to Hagerty Earthworks LLC of Muscatina, Iowa, in the amount of Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number four? And from the council, Alderman Dunn?
Thank you. I just want to say it's nice to see this project finally moving forward. It's been a long time that we've been working on it, and it's glad to see it's moving. Thanks.
Second that, and thank you. Item number four, we'll move on. And finally, item number five is a motion awarding a contract for the purchase and installation of a replacement playground at Cork Hill Park to Fry and Associates, Inc. of North Kansas City, Missouri, in the amount of $85,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number five? And counsel? That'll move on. Below on our agenda, we have our purchases listed from $10,000 to $50,000. They're not read each individually, but they're listed there for your information. Alderwoman Lee, would you like to set our agenda, please?
I move that items one, two, three... One, two, four, and five be placed on consent, and item three be placed on discussion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes Finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Next area is other ordinances, resolutions, or motions. We have one, but first we have to suspend the rules to put it on. So is there a motion for suspension of the rules to vote? So moved. There's a motion and a second. Brian, please call the rule for suspension. We need eight. Grip?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman? Oh, I'm sorry, she's not here. Condon?
Yes.
Aye, yes, as your honor. Very good. We suspend the rules. Now we can address the issue. There's a motion approving a beer and liquor license application, new license, new owner, temporary permit. German-American heritage center and museum, temporary outdoor event, October 21st, 119 East 3rd Street, license type C. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will Alderman move the resolution... I'm sorry, the motion?
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion from Alder folks? Alderman Jobchin?
While it may be sacrilegious to vote no on allowing some Germans to have beer in October, I'm going to stick with my more recent stance on these types of items this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lee?
I am also going to say no, because hopefully they will put things in on time. Is there something that... Can I ask a question of what happened?
So they were timely filed. It was a staff error that didn't get it to the agenda. So the applicant was timely filed.
Okay. That's good to know. All right.
Anyone else? Okay. Brian, please call the rule for this motion. Jobchin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Aye, yes, as your honor. Very good. The motion passes. The next area, is there any public with business? You'll have five minutes. Please state your name, order, or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you are. And please address us as a body and not as an individual. And if the next person who wants to talk is by the podium, I'll note that somebody else wants to talk, please. Thank you.
All right. Kay Stewart from Davenport. I truthfully wish today I could finally say it's been 143 days, and we have started to finally see accountability for the very preventable catastrophe of 324 Main Street. But sadly, 143 days, we still have yet to see that even to begin. It honestly shouldn't have even taken this long. But wouldn't it show some good for you in doing so, instead of going with the Kool-Aid and good old boy mentality that we have seen? We've heard and seen the numerous emails pleading about the no heat system and water issues that was sent to numerous people within these City Hall walls. I can't imagine... I can imagine that tenants started first with sending emails to the landlord and to maintenance people and so forth before they even started to send emails to staff and to aldermen in order to somehow get awakened that the fact is that they need heat or water issues. I'm not sure how could anyone just simply ignore such emails. Have any of you guys been without heat? But yet had to pay for that place to live? I have, and along with living on the streets of Dayton, Ohio because I was homeless. It honestly sickens me with the feeling that even more apparent that the city wants to continue to sweep this underneath the rug and hope that it is truly forgotten while starting to pick on other issues that is affecting small businesses that now has also ricocheted into his other businesses. If you're not really too sure on who I'm talking about, I'm talking about Yoshi. Because of what has happened down here at the City Hall, he now is being vacated from an establishment at North Park Mall that he has paid every single month for the past five years. Good standing business, but because of the issues with the city, he's being terminated with that business and having to relocate or sell all the items that he has in there. I, for one, am very proud of him for standing up for not only his establishment, but for himself. There has been so many false accusations, false narratives that have been put out on him, and he's been able to stand up against them and combat that with facts and not just his voice. People can ignore the issues, but on a city level, but I'm sure it will be picked up on the state, if not higher. And then also to another issue, the mission for the Davenport Police is to protect and care for the well-being of our community while providing excellence in police service. The Davenport Police Department is committed to the values of integrity, fairness, competency, professionalism through positive, meaningful police-citizens interaction and partnerships. These interactions and partnerships preserve the peace and safety of the community, making Davenport a desirable place to live. I have always supported and admired the police who stand by the statement, actually stand by it, follow it, and make this for all people. But I've also been disappointed. See, I could be in law enforcement right now if I wanted to. I have a degree in criminal justice, but due to a brain injury resulting from domestic abuse, it changed my journey. But I know the laws very well, and I would have stood by if I was a law enforcement. So when I place calls for assistance to help the amazing security team who did everything right that night, which was a couple Saturdays ago, due to stupid drunk people that just continued on making an issue, they called the police to get help and got half-assed help, which is unacceptable to me. You wanted Yoshi to call you, yet now wanting to penalize him for doing so. Make that make sense. I don't think you can. I just don't understand how you want people to call the police when they need help, but then yet want to sit here and punish them for doing so. You know, I've seen the staff work. I've been there past, you know, past 11 o'clock. I've seen them actually work. They got some awesome security guards, you know, and trained by people that have been vets and have, you know, thankful for their service, you know, fought for this country. So...
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is David Ezra Sedran, Third Ward. The City of Davenport requires all landlords to have an annually renewed rental license. Apparently, that is all landlords except Andrew Wald. Andrew Wald received many special favors from the City of Davenport. Not having a valid rental license was just one of them. On August 27th, 2021, Andrew Wald Investments applied for a rental license for 324 Main. Mr. Wald, however, did not pay the fee for this license. Mr. Wald did not pay any of the fees for multiple licenses and inspections. On October 3rd, 2021, the City of Davenport sent Mr. Wald a Dunning Notice to pay his rental license. Mr. Wald still did not pay his rental license fees. January 28th, 2022, the City of Davenport sent Andrew Wald a final notice of delinquent rental license fees. Mr. Wald gets lots of final notices. He didn't pay this bill either. February 4th, 2022, the City of Davenport sent Andrew Wald a final notice of delinquent rental license fees. Mr. Wald gets lots of final notices. He didn't pay this bill either. February 4th, 2022, even though Wald had not paid his rental license fees, the City of Davenport included him on the list of active and new rental licenses for 324 Main Street. August 2nd, 2022, the City of Davenport sent Andrew Wald a delinquent rental license notice. He didn't pay that either. September 22nd, 2022, the City's Community and Economic Development lists Wald as having a valid rental license for 324 Main Street. This is important because the City of Davenport is paying Andrew Wald thousands of dollars to house HUD recipients and veterans at 324 Main Street. I'm going to repeat that. Andrew Wald was not paying the City of Davenport any of the money he owed the city. While at the same time, the city was paying Andrew Wald thousands of dollars to house HUD and veterans at 324 Main Street. And I've got the receipts right here. I've got the receipts with the check numbers. You know it's true. I'm going to repeat that. Andrew Wald was not paying the City of Davenport any of the money that he owed the city, while at the same time, the city was paying Andrew Wald thousands of dollars. November 11th, 2022, Andrew Wald appears in the city's accounts receivable active rental license spreadsheet. November 23rd, 2022, the City of Davenport sends this list of unpaid rental licenses and rental inspection fees to Wald. Wald doesn't pay these bills either. Meanwhile, the city continues to pay Wald thousands of dollars for placing HUD Section 8 and veterans in need of housing into 324 Main Street, a building that has 74 open housing inspection violations. And then somebody with the City of Davenport creates the most amazing document that I have found through the Freedom of Information Act. Here it is. Now, every time you create a document on a computer, it also creates what we call metadata that tells somebody like me when it was created. I have a doctorate in computer science from the University of Iowa, so I know what I'm talking about. It's like every time you send an email, it creates a metadata header that shows the IP address the email came from. Ask the mayor about this. He knows all about those.
Sir, one more time.
This is the metadata for Andrew Wald's 2022 rental license for 324 Main Street. It was created on Saturday night, May 20th, 2023, at 18 minutes and 13 seconds after midnight. Yes. Some hard-working City of Davenport employee on a Saturday night, 18 minutes and 13 seconds after midnight, and just eight days before 324 Main Street collapsed, killing three and dreadfully maiming a fourth, decides this would be a good time to create a rental license for Andrew Wald for the previous year. This is a 2022 rental license. After two FOIA requests, the City of Davenport has yet to produce any receipts that show Andrew Wald ever paid any of his rental license fees. And Wald is still getting paid to this very day by the city, every month, to house Section 8 and veterans. It's obvious that if justice is to be served for the dead and maimed victims of 324 Main Street, it will have to come through the courts. That is why I have shared all these documents that I've acquired through FOIA.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Have a nice night. Sir, thank you. Please, you're done. Mr. Sedran, please sit down. Sit down, sir. One more time, and you'll be asked to leave. Okay, sir, you can leave now. You can leave. No, not sit down. You can leave. Thank you.
Thank you, too, sir.
Yes, sir. Next, please. No, sir, you can leave. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Sir, I've asked you three times. Thank you. Thank you. Just, I'll give you your time, Ms. Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm going to sit down.
Ms. Kelly, just pause. We're going to pause. Mr. Sedran, you need to leave. I gave you a warning at the beginning of this meeting.
I'm going to work around. What are the other names?
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
My name is Vera L. Harret Kelly. I'm in the sixth floor with Ben Jobson. And I've been coming to these meetings. I just didn't start. I've been coming. I've been here for 56 years. I know all the mayors. I know all the chief of police. I know everybody. And the reason I came to just address you all and tell, you know, you need to get your business together, but then I get this piece of paper, and I am surprised. I would like to know who put this in the Quad City Times. I would like to know who was the speaker. Tim Kelly is my son. He was raised here. He went to McKinley School. He went to Sutherland. He went to Central. And he went to college. He went to California, and he decided to move back home. I'm proud to say he's in his 50s. I won't give him how old he is, but I have never had to come down to get him out of jail. I had never had to go to the school. When he went to McKinley, it was only three black family going there. There were the Simmons, the Scotts, and the Kellys. There were the Simmons, the Scotts, and the Kellys. And I always had to go to school. Why? And I worked three to eleven. I raised my kids from home. You can check the records. You don't see nothing they done down here was against the city. They, they took his clothes. He had to play gym. They took his clothes and put them in the commo's. I went to the principal. He didn't do nothing. But I went to the superintendent and I told him, this gotta stop. It's only three. He said, well, he was talking to some, well, they didn't have nobody to talk to but the Scotts and the Simmons. They didn't want to talk to them. And now he's on this city council. And who's a never? Put this in the quiet city times today. I'm gonna read it for you. About the allocation of the racial slur from city council members. First, let me say I don't condone language like this in any situation, either between friends or folks. Peoples need to break the habits of using bad language in conversation. And it says, it didn't say a person, they say, that being said, Alderman Kelly needs to be mindful of his words and, and break his, this habit before he makes acquisition or point a finger at other peoples. He's not the only one talking. If Alderman Kelly was offended by a comment that was made during a conversation after council meeting, why didn't he say something at that time before all this got out of hand? I hadn't been up here to say nothing. It's not only him. All of you guys ought to get together and learn how to cooperate with one another. I've been president of the NAACP for fifteen years. We never had a problem. When we had a problem, we sat down and we talked. But you guys don't talk. But I want to tell you this. I stay at forty-four fifteen Jersey Bridge Road. I don't want nothing happened to my son on Bell Avenue. Do I'm coming to the city? And I want to hear something. And thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, ma'am. Council members. During the, uh...
Ma'am, if you give your name and location, please.
...Davenport, uh, city council chambers right now. Y'all don't, you know, discuss yourselves. I don't want to give you that information. But I want to just address something here. Uh, during the September twentieth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting, Alderman Kelly made the decision to share some of his experience with racism within City Hall. As a council member, he stated that the conversation occurred between himself, Alderman Ortiz, Alderman Condon, Alderman Grip, and Alderman Dunn. Despite half of the council members being present for this conversation, not one has said a thing publicly. No one has condemned the use of racial slurs, nor have any of you acknowledged that the incident actually happened. Everyone has stood by while Tim is accused of lying by this man over here. And now we learn that the city is refusing to cover the fees for an attorney to defend him in a retaliatory lawsuit. We're even learning that the city attorney has told Tim that the city is not going to be responsible for the legal fees incurred by this frivolous and malicious lawsuit because it's not city business. A sitting city council member using racial slurs in City Hall is not city business. That's quite a statement to make, but you know what? It's an honest, direct representation of how you all feel about racism. You don't care nothing about black people. You pretend to care by giving lip service and catchphrases to get headlines, but we could all see what's happening behind the scenes. Not a goddamn thing. Every week, I watch you all chastise the public and demand that we not say people's names or titles, but no one can find the words to tell this man that he should have not used racial slurs. And apparently, he lacks the common sense and self-awareness to know that he should not be using on his own, but we should trust him and the rest who've remained silent to make decisions in our best interests. I think the fuck not. As a city sitting council member, he used racial slurs. Now, now you're being told that there's going to be an imaginary investigation? That's the end of the inquiry? You're out of your minds that we will stand idly by and continue to be treated as second-class citizens? Tim, thank you for remaining silent, uh, within this racist system where you felt comfortable enough to use, where he felt comfortable enough to use racial slurs in council chambers. Now I want to know what is going to be done about it. I want to know from all of you, especially those who have remained silent because you do not care. You do not care enough to interject on his behalf. You didn't care enough to interject on behalf of the rights of this Alderman, his constituents. You didn't care enough to interject on behalf of your own constituents. And you definitely didn't care to interject on behalf of the staff of the city of Davenport because the matter is you don't care about black people. And this lack of concern for black people was reiterated by the mayor sham investigation, which apparently hasn't, uh, begun yet. It was raised slowly as a PR stunt in preparation for the election. Each day that goes by, you all have expressed a complete and utter disregard for his humanity and personhood, and not just his humanity and personhood, but the humanity and personhood of every black person in the city of Davenport. We hear you loud and clear. We are not worthy of your defense. We're not entitled to protection. Uh, we can, uh, fend for ourselves. We hear you and we see you for exactly what you are.
Thank you, ma'am.
Full of shit.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Audra Ramp, and I am in the resident of the first ward in Davenport. I'm here to show support for the continuation of a partnership between the Humane Society of Scott County and the city of Davenport for animal control services and animal sheltering. I began volunteering with the Humane Society of Scott County three years ago, first with cats and now with cats and dogs. During this time, I've watched the determination and dedication of each member of the organization go to great lengths to save, to nurture, and to promote adoptions to forever homes. This consistent effort led by the Humane Society of Scott County for animals that are neglected, abandoned, or running at large is the reason why many of these animals are now in forever homes, which is a public service off, public service benefit to the city of Davenport because they are now off the streets. Currently, the Humane Society of Scott County enforces city ordinances for animal sheltering and animal control services. For the required amount of work, the Humane Society of Scott County spends thirteen dollars and sixty-four cents per capita, while the city pays three dollars and ninety-five cents per capita. Obviously, nowhere near the amount it takes to properly care for these animals. Local government has a responsibility to their citizens to fund animal shelters and animal control services. I'm here today as a resident requesting my city enter into a suitable and sustainable contract with the Humane Society of Scott County for animal sheltering, which includes housing, food, and medical care, and animal control services. Proper animal care costs money, and the Humane Society does a great job. They are dedicated, thorough, and they meet the needs of the animals, which the Humane Society has provided at tremendous expense to their nonprofit organization. This partnership is hugely beneficial to the city, and most importantly, the Humane Society of Scott County is in this business. They have the skills, they have the knowledge, and they have the support of donors behind them who donate their time and their money. Most people prefer to donate to a nonprofit organization rather than to the city government. As a resident and a taxpayer, I implore the city to enter into a fair and appropriate contract with the Humane Society of Scott County. Entering into this contract with the Humane Society of Scott County substantially decreases unnecessary euthanasia in a city run, that a city-run shelter would likely to require. Two similar-sized cities within a ninety-mile radius do have lower per capita rates. However, they also have astronomical euthanasia rates. Cutting costs is a polite way of saying healthy animals are unnecessarily euthanized. The cost for the city to build their own animal housing and animal control center would be roughly six million dollars to build the building. Substantial upfront costs such as furnishing the building with kennels, plus monthly utilities, appropriate staffing, and any other associated costs. The least amount Davenport would spend after the investment cost is roughly nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars annually. These amounts are cost prohibitive and far more than a fair and appropriate contract amount requested by the Humane Society of Scott County to provide the animal sheltering and animal control services to the residents of Davenport. Again, I encourage a partnership between the city of Davenport and the Humane Society of Scott County. Thank you, council, for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Maggie Weber, and I'm resident of the second ward. I am also here in support of the Humane Society of Scott County. I'm a volunteer there, um, relatively newer compared to everyone else there. Um, however, I, I love what Audra said. She gave you guys lots of, um, facts and, you know, hard numbers of what we're looking at, at the Humane Society. However, I would like to really focus on one of the things she said, um, when she compared Scott County and our services to the surrounding cities that we, um, compare them to. Um, cities such as Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, and Peoria is kind of what we, um, compared to in, uh, comparison to size of our population and the way our governments run. And like she said, there are a few cities that do, um, pay their Humane Society animal control what we are currently getting from the city of Davenport. However, yes, their euthanasia rates are astronomically higher than ours in Scott County. And I think that's something that we should be insanely proud of and something that we should upkeep. Um, and yeah, it shouldn't be for, you know, at the expense of these animals to keep our prices lowered, right? We would never hear from the government, you know, gosh, we have too many kids in foster care. We don't really have the budget for it. We really have to get rid of some kids in our foster care system, right? We would never do that. That's absolutely insane, right? So that's my main take-home that I think of all the time, and you know why we think of in budgeting and this Humane Society. The second thing I'll do, I'm not really a statistics and numbers person. I know, um, we've given someone on your board all of our numbers and, um, and research, so I really encourage you to read up on that so that you're educated on it. However, I will leave you with a different perspective. Um, I think as humans, it's difficult for us to connect with something if we don't have, um, the right connection or relationship. So I don't know if any of you have animals at home or, you know, a family member with animals, or maybe you're not an animal person. That's okay. I'm a little biased, but, um, I would encourage you to listen to this just maybe to make that connection. Uh, imagine you have two small children and you have to go to, um, go to work. You bring home the bacon for those two kids, right? You have to find daycare. Daycare is expensive. We all know that, right? You're looking for some good, uh, qualities in your daycare, uh, clean, good staff, friendly, uh, you know, things like that, good resources. You find a good daycare, you take your kids, your kids go for a month, they absolutely love it, you love it, it's a win-win, everyone's happy. However, at the end of the month, the daycare center says, hey, we love having your kids. Here's your bill, it's a thousand dollars, right? And you're like, whoa, 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 a thousand dollars? That's pretty steep. My cousin said they can watch my kids for five hundred. Uh, I'll pay you five hundred. And the daycare center goes, wait, but, you know, staffing, food, snacks, naptime, activities, keeping the lights on, it, it all costs money. And they go, man, pay five hundred dollars. The daycare center is gonna, you know, tell you, well, we have, we have bills, how do I pay the other five hundred? Say, well, you can fundraise, you know, maybe start a GoFundMe, do a bunch of fundraisers, see if you can fill in that extra five hundred dollars. That's kind of that other perspective that I'm hoping that you look at, right? When we compare, you know, one life for another, right? Human kids and another living creature of animals. So I hope that you can draw those connections, um, and I really hope that you read up on those, those numbers and statistics that we've offered to your guys' department, and I hope that you, uh, look into this issue a little further and support, uh, the Humane Society. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's been a while. Um, at McWilliams, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, Route Fifty-seventh Street, uh, eighth ward. Um, I just wanted to let you guys all know that Scott County Special Olympics has qualified for state bowling. Everybody, well, not just including me, but everybody on my team qualified for state, and that is the first time in my thirty-one-year career of doing Special Olympics that it has ever happened. So I just wanted to make a surprise appearance and let you guys all know what I've been up to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Cruz. I'm a resident of the first ward. I am also here tonight to offer my support for the Humane Society of Scott County. As you may or may not know, the Humane Society has held the animal control contract to provide services for city of Davenport for many decades. There are some misconceptions that the Humane Society is responsible for the services, but that is not entirely true. The Humane Society is contracted to provide the services for the city of Davenport. The city actually pays for those services from the general fund. The contracted work that they do provides critical services to the residents of Davenport and Scott County. Eighty percent of the calls that they receive are from the city of Davenport. They work tirelessly to reunite lost pets with their owners, provide medical services to injured pets, investigate cases of animal abuse, community outreach, and public safety, just to name a few. You may remember they worked together with the fire department to rescue some of the animals trapped at the three twenty-four Main Street building collapse. The current leadership of the Humane Society of Scott County has worked hard, sorry, worked hard the last two years to change the community's perception about the organization. They are passionate about what they do, and they are doing their best to give the animals in their care a second chance. Everyone deserves to be given a second chance. They do not euthanize animals in their care just because they are out of space. As a person who loves animals, this is tremendously important to me. At any given point, they are either at capacity or near capacity, yet they still find ways to make the animals safe. They work with a large foster network, one of the largest in Iowa, to get pets rehabilitated in order to help them find loving permanent homes.
Your, your honor, there's conversation going on in the back, and I'm having a hard time.
I apologize.
Could we have that stopped? I'm sorry, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. You'll get your time. Thank you.
In twenty twenty-two, they saved over ninety percent of the animals that came to the shelter. That is an amazing feat considering how many animals that actually come through their shelter every year. It's over three thousand animals that are coming in their doors. As a resident of Scott County in Davenport, this is important to me and why I choose to support them. But these life-saving and public safety services don't come without a cost. The Humane Society receives just four hundred and two thousand dollars from the city annually. This is just point one seven percent of this Davenport's entire budget. This is less than the annual budget for the mayor's office and the city council budget, which is seven hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars annually. Of that amount of money, seventy-seven percent is for salaries and benefits. The Humane Society of Scott County has many loyal donors that provide thousands of dollars annually to support their continued work. My family is one of those donors. You may ask, why is this partnership between the city and the Humane Society important? As a not-for-profit organization, the Humane Society can receive cost-saving grants that a government now would not be eligible to receive. By receiving grants and donations from supporters, they are able to provide life-saving programs that result in a better community and shelter operations for animals than what a government-operated shelter can provide. If the city funded the shelter adequately, they would be able to take on other cost-saving measures which align with their mission to help animals in need by providing shelter, adoption services, and support resources for the community with their care, with care and compassion. Animal protection services are needed for Davenport. The real question is who is best able to provide that for them? If the city would decide to not renew the contract with the Humane Society and chose to operate a shelter on their own, it would come at a much more significant cost to the taxpayers. For a building to just start with, a building would have to be built or remodeled at an estimated cost of six million dollars from your capital fund. Then there are ongoing staffing costs, vehicles to provide, medical expenses, and food and utilities, just to name a few. These costs would be ongoing to the general fund. Perhaps the city could end up taking these services in-house at a lower cost, but that cost savings would probably come from euthanizing otherwise healthy animals. I certainly don't want to see that happen since they are currently again saving ninety percent of those animals that are entrusted to them. I sincerely hope that you can come to an agreement on a new contract with the Humane Society of Scott County that is financially beneficial to them, the city of Davenport, and the residents of Davenport. We, as a... should be compensated appropriately. Thank you for your time this evening, and remember, adopt, don't shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
LaShawna Dixon, Fifth Ward. I am up here to address once again is that respect. I've seen and heard just I am appalled on some behavior tonight, and it's gonna be on YouTube tomorrow, I think, right? It does not hurt, I believe it does not hurt to allow some, we hear the bell, we know when our time is up, just to let somebody finish a statement, twenty seconds, just to finish a statement, I don't think that's big of a deal. I've heard people raise their voices on this night, and that's disrespectful. You talk about respect and decorum, well, that wasn't done today. The young man came here and asked for understanding, and then was later given that understanding. Thirty seconds later, however, the way it happened, unsavory. And then when somebody comes up here and says something about what you've done in your past, then it's hurtful. Well, I can't say that. Wait, it's election time, you don't want your business out there? Come on. It's sick. Respect. Do I need to come with childhood books or bring a novel on how to be respectful? It's not hard to do. Our parents teach it, our churches teach it, we're all taught it. To allow somebody just thirty seconds to finish their statement, we hear the bell, okay? Finish the sentence, done. I'm tired of it, and it has to change. This is our time to state our concerns. Like, thirty seconds would really hurt for somebody to finish what they're saying. It's ridiculous. So I just, I ain't gonna call no names out, I know I can't do that because I don't want to be poor in order tonight. But go home, and while you're reading to your children, your grandchildren, pull out that good old book about respecting people. Read it to them, because maybe our kids will do better than us. Not us, y'all. It's the tone in your voice that is unsavory. If I'm talking like this, I'm fine, but then if I raise my voice up, I'm hostile. And that's what I've seen in some of you tonight. Unacceptable. Fix it. The last four months has been terrible. It's been terrible. So I don't, if I have to go to the library and get books and come up here and read you one, I'll do it next week so y'all can figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. As a community, we are angry and frustrated. It has been one hundred and forty-three days since the preventable building collapsed, and there's still no accountability whatsoever. How can a man who killed three people and maimed another person still be walking the streets completely free and to add insult to injury to those he devastated, he's still allowed to be a landlord? He lives every day as if nothing happened, and that is absolutely sickening because any other person would be in jail or at least charged by now. People claim that they're trying to make our city safer, but I respectfully disagree because if that was the case, he would have been stripped of his right to own or rent out any buildings in the city months ago. You were quick to illegally remove an alderman from his seat and to revoke a bar's outdoor license, and neither one of those killed anyone, let alone three people. Our city is watching, and we will be voting accordingly on November seventh. Many of us are also extremely concerned about our homeless residents. We can all see and feel that winter is fast approaching. We need to have something figured out for them. There are shelters, but many of them fill up quickly, and the ones who can't get there in time or had to wait in line too long are left to figure it out. It is heartbreaking to see them huddled under blankets and with what little clothing they have to try to stay warm. We can do better for them, and we need to. We don't need more buildings in our city for people to visit, we need the ones that can be salvaged to be fixed and opened up for those who need a hand up. We don't want to hear the excuse that there's no funding because if we didn't have the city's money paying for the sod that Wold should have purchased and had laid, and there wasn't money tied up in eleven different preventable lawsuits, there would be plenty of money to do this. I'm sure all of you are as tired of seeing and hearing from us as we are of coming down to do it, but it needs to be done. With that being said, we will keep on showing up until justice is served for the victims of three-twenty-four Main Street and our homeless community have a safe place to stay. Philippians two, three, through four says, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit; rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interest of others." We need to fix the things that are broken for our future generations. They shouldn't suffer because we suck at life sometimes. I thank God for Ezra because without his due diligence, the corruption would be carried on, but someone's going to be accountable, whether it's here on this earth now or when we stand before Almighty God. You get to choose.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name's Gary Eklund, and I live in Davenport, Iowa, and, uh, gonna do something different here for a minute. Trail of Tears. Trail of Tears. Looks like they want to kill me, drive me from my land, starvation, hunger, discrimination for another hundred years. When we said you all had to be west of the Mississippi, we didn't mean you could buy property this close to the Mississippi, boy. We didn't mean that at all. I want to imagine for a minute that through some modern miracle, the United States Attorney General Merrick Garland or the Assistant Attorney General Kristen Clark for civil rights could hear me, and I would say, "Davenport, Iowa needs a United States Department of Justice investigation, two investigations. One into criminal conduct within the city's departments. The Housing Department, the Inspections Department, the Legals Department, the Human Resources Department, everybody. And then we need a civil rights investigation to investigate hiring practices that say all of the highest jobs go to people who appear that they could meet the one-drop rule. And if any of them are half Filipino, half Chinese, half Native American, good for them. But when I look at the website where it shows the highest-paid department heads, the only black department head is the Civil Rights Commission, and the Civil Rights Commission is not allowed to investigate discrimination in the City of Davenport itself. We need an investigation in the United States Department of Justice." And I'm gonna herein refer to something, a declaration made by a city employee who I'm not allowed to name, a housing inspector who is himself a landlord, who lives outside of Davenport, who made it clear to me in multiple conversations that he did not see his job as inspecting buildings for safety, he saw his job as a professional low-life hunter. He came from what he calls his three-and-a-half-acre country estate out in the county where he repeatedly laughed and bragged to me that he doesn't have to pay the city taxes, and he repeatedly told me that if anybody did to him what he's doing to me, they would be arrested and they would go to prison. And he thought that was hilarious. I am calling, he loudly declared to a landlord named Chris Grimm, Chris Grimm called the city after Easter Sunday after he was cussing at black children in an ugly incident. He called the city and said that he was forced to rent to all these low-life black tenants because he couldn't get higher-class citizens, he wanted the city to help him replace his black tenants in Kelly's Ward with higher-class white citizens. And the landlord inspector said that it was okay if the landlord discriminated against black people, and the city helped him because it wasn't really the city doing the discrimination, the city was just helping him do the discrimination. And he loudly declared he would come over and hang out at one of these landlords' property hours and hours and hours of paid time in his gas-guzzling truck hanging out at a landlord's house, talking about how much they both hate black people, they both hate me, they both hate inferior people. He told that man that he was gonna declare it illegal. The guy, the landlord said, according to him, the landlord said he didn't like looking at tomatoes and grapevines in my yard, and he told the landlord that he was gonna declare it illegal for me to grow plants in my yard. Cities destroyed blueberries, grapes, blackberries, peppers, grapevines. I'm asking the United States Attorney General to investigate why the City of Davenport in 2021 declared it illegal for me to grow grapes, and they came and destroyed my grapes in a truck and with guns, they destroyed my grapes with peppers, they destroyed my peppers, my tomatoes, my lettuce, my peas, my carrots, my beans, they tore them up by the roots in front of me while men with guns stood by to protect them, and I was taunted by the woman who's in charge of building safety that I couldn't stop her because she had guns and I didn't? Why, under what city law, under what state law, under what federal law does the city come to my house and say, "You can't grow a grapevine in this three-year-old grapevine in a pot"? But the mayor could because the mayor, this isn't the mayor saying this, I want to be fair to the mayor, this is not the mayor who said this, this is the city staff. The city staff said this same three-year-old grapevine in a clay pot would be legal in the mayor's yard because he's a superior citizen and I'm an inferior citizen. I want to show something else, that the City of Davenport, the head of building safety declared solar lights like this illegal. He was in my yard repeatedly in December and January, December twenty-two and January twenty-three, six months before the building collapse. He personally said these were illegal, and I couldn't have them. They're solar lights like you buy at Harbor Freight, and I thought I had convinced him that they were legal. I explained to him, you know, I like to be out in my yard in the dark, you can move them around, you can have them set so they're motion detectors, or you can use them just as spotlights, flashlights. If the power goes out, you get a telephone pull-down.
Thank you.
They come in handy.
Thank you.
Illegal. Sorry if I'm holding you up with the...
We'll wait till you get your stuff.
He's all right.
Just give it a second, we'll wait for him to...
Okay.
I do apologize for that.
You're all right. Tell me.
Please.
I don't have much to say. LaShawna Dixon, Fifth Ward. I'm shocked by the information that was brought to the meeting tonight by Mr. Ezra, and the only thing I can say is that I don't think none of us was expecting that to be out into public. And I don't care what nobody says. Someone from the city has to be held responsible for what was presented tonight. If he did not have the legal documents to rent those, that place, and didn't pay his due diligence to rent those places, he should not have been renting them. So at what point does a city take responsibility? I understand lawsuits and stuff are going off, so y'all guys feel the need to have your mouth taped shut if you want to, but obviously, it's easy to get if Mr. Ezra got it. Well, not easy because Mr. Ezra is a very smart man. So at what point do you guys take responsibility? We've been here for how many days? Hundred and forty-three. The two weeks spent outside in the heat, watching. Mr. Mayor, look at me, don't look this way. What? Look at me. At what point do you take responsibility? At what point do y'all guys sit here and say, "Okay, we might have done something wrong"? At what point? And so we sat here, and we watched for the last, how many city council meetings saying, "Hey, this, 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 how come nobody's been arrested? How come nobody's been..." And it takes one smart man to get some papers. So what? What I'm expecting now is for you guys to use this as a ploy? What is this? Has the cameras been shut off tonight because you don't want everybody to hear? What? What's the deal tonight? Because that's what's happened. We know why you shut the cameras off. We know why you want to kick people out, because you want to keep our mouths taped shut so that you don't have to explain what you guys have done wrong. It's sad. Could you imagine just being a rancher in your house, and you're just laying there chilling, and all of a sudden, everything is just gone? And not just because what you did, it's because the landlord did, and the city backed them up. You guys, not you guys, somebody owes somebody a big apology, and what do they call it? Accountability. Just take accountability. How long are y'all sitting back and keeping your mouths shut? I don't know how you sleep at nights. How do you sleep at night? Because I don't, I tell you, I had sleepless nights, and I didn't have anything to do with it. And then people are like, "Oh, do you know somebody sold a video to the news? How do you sleep at night doing that chill"? Y'all guys need to check yourselves. As humans, check yourselves. Because I tell you, if I was in one of them seats, I'd put my hands up. Because God is my witness, you don't treat people like this. Y'all guys are holding a rifle, and y'all just killing people. Y'all guys are responsible for this. That's all I got to say. Y'all guys, you have to, you have to take responsibility when it has your guys' name on it.
Thank you. Next, please.
David Anderson, Ward Five. I won three Dale Carnegie Speaker Awards forty years ago, so I do not want to criticize, condemn, or complain. I love Davenport. I moved here, and it is fantastic. Staff, police, sanitation is perfect. There is so much good in Davenport. It's growing, it's booming. When I lived in Illinois, the land of corruption, dent and forehead, long story, brain damage, I feel safe in Davenport. I just really want to somehow do some good. I'm requesting that the TV in the lobby be turned on during meetings for me and others. It's a good place for some people to calm down, de-stress. I would like to be the greeter and unofficial security guard, I'll put in a resume or whatever. I do so much volunteer work that, but I can't talk about it because it's against my religion to speak of it. So one thing I'd like to point out that I've also known for forty years, Future Maps of America, right down the Mississippi River Valley, this is all gonna be underwater someday. Forty years ago, people asked me, "Why do you live there"? I said, "Because there's a lot of money to be made here, and I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, I think I'm gonna be alive long enough." So when I see plans for things downtown that are severely expensive, my goal is the future. I was born a futurist. Ideas. Another thing I'd like to see is more transparency, please, from Davenport. Where I used to live, every contract was fully put online. I found one problem one time, sorry, I'm disabled, and I'm... And so I was hoping that Davenport could be more transparent because of the fact that you've got wonderful employees. I mean, this place is just stacked with all kinds of good stuff here. One of the things was on Facebook, there was a fifty-fifty rainwater retention program financing, and I was gung-ho because I studied that for hours and hours and hours and hours and hours, and I never got to be able to do it. But I'm hoping that this, somebody will take this issue up because I can't do it, I'm too old, and I still do it myself, small scale, but this would be absolutely fantastic. I brought it up in Moline. They all said my ideas were stupid, so now, in front of my mom's house, it still floods this high in the street because they wouldn't take any action. So I am so glad to live in Davenport. Thank you to everybody for being so wonderful over here. I'm, I just love it, I can't help it. So, thank you. I'm not as good a speaker anymore because a few issues.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else, city minister? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any pose. Very good. Have a good day.